...of the Board of Trustees of Judson ISD is called to order at 5:30 PM. I am very pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operations of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public, and as our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. And in order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. And at this time, board members, um, let's see, let me make sure. Okay, you may proceed to check in. Mr. LaFoy.
Oh, I gotta do the call of names.
No, sir. All right, and we do have a quorum. There are five of us that are present. Thank you, and to my left is Dr. Ball.
Welcome.
And we will proceed with the presentation of the budget for the 2020, 1920 fiscal school year. Dr. Ball.
Thank you all. Thank you, yes, no, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We have lots of information to share. I know Mr. Atkins has and others of the team have prepared lots of information, so we'll go ahead and get started.
For the 1920 school year. And if we can get this to come up. The budget was prepared as required by the Texas Education Code under the section 44 oh two through oh six. It had to be prepared and ready by the 19th and has to be approved by July 1st for those fiscal years. So, the budget objectives of the Judson Independent School District is to support the board goals of educating the students and efficiently running the district, demonstrate fiscal responsibility, and tonight we will look at the budgets for general operating, child nutrition, and interest in sinking. So, the districts are funded through a state allocation mainly driven by ADA, which is average daily attendance, the number of students that come to our schools. Our projection this year is 21,300. This past year, we were at 21,153. It's also, the other components are local taxes, some federal allocation dollars, and then some grants and other sources that we get throughout the year. So, House Bill Three was a piece of legislation that was adopted by the legislature this year, and there were many changes to the state funding formula. And the state is still working through some of those changes and will be for the next three or four months or longer. One of the big changes was they increased the basic allotment from 5140 to 6160, and so that's the basis of the formula for education in Texas. They added a dyslexia allotment with a weight of .1, so that's a brand-new one. Our state compensatory allotment had a weight of .2 for all at-risk students, and now it is going to a tiered rate of .225 to .275. There are five tiers, and it depends on the census block of where the student lives. And so, the higher the economically disadvantaged census block is, the higher the weight would be for that area. The mainstream special ed allotment increased from 1.1 to 1.15. Dual language went from .1 to .15 for our English-language learner students, and for our non-English-language learning students, they added a .05, that's a new weight. CTE funding was funded, grades nine through 12, and now is funded grades seven through 12. There's our early reading allotment, early literacy, with a weight of .1, and this is how the state funded pre-K. They did not really fund pre-K through ADA. We still only get half ADA on our pre-K students. They added this allotment, and they said, "You can use this to fund full-day pre-K," and that's what we're doing. The transportation allotment went from a linear density formula, which means the number of students on a bus times the miles that they ride, to just a straight mileage formula. Our new instructional facilities allotment formula went from 25 million available to 100 million. This is a fund that provides resources to districts that are opening new schools. The tax ratification election, which we talked about a couple of times during our budget workshops, was taken off of the, is not available this year. It will become available again for districts January 1st of 2020. The yield on the Tier Two, Level One pennies, these are what is commonly known as the golden pennies, reduced from 106 to $98. The increase on the yield Tier Two, Level Two pennies, which are our copy pennies, increased from 3195 to 4928, but then it is brought back down through some tax compression that will happen next year. There was a compression of the Tier One tax rate to 93 cents, or by 93%. For us, that is gonna be 93 cents. Our Tier One tax rate currently is $1, and so when we compress it by 93%, it'll be 93 cents, and then we have four Tier Two pennies that we can add on top of that. So, our M&amp;O tax rate this year, you'll see, we're gonna propose a 97-cent M&amp;O tax rate. It did repeal some of the existing allotments. The high school allotment was repealed. The cost of education index was repealed. The GT allotment was repealed, the staff salary allotment, and the additional state aid for homestead limitations were repealed. It required districts to do a calculation and use 30% of the increase in state and local revenue from the 1819 school year to what were proposed to get in the 1920 school year to give raises. And so, we will look at that in detail in a little bit, that calculation and how it came about. It moves to current-year values in the formula, and if you remember, at one of our work sessions, we looked at current-year values, and that provided Judson, probably would've provided us this year, about an additional $7 million in revenue, a one-time bump, but that no longer is available to us. And it limits the M&amp;O tax revenue growth going forward to 2.5%. And so, those are the major changes in House Bill Three. So, anytime we do a budget, we have some assumptions, because a budget is our best guess. And so, again, we're starting out with the average daily attendance, that's the basis, 21,300 students. We staffed according to the basic school model that we approved back, I believe, around February. We estimate a taxable value of 10,600 million. This is about a 10% increase over last year. Implementation of the proposed cost savings that we've discussed over the last couple budget workshops, and we'll outline those here in a little bit. The budget includes 1.1 million for mediation and tutorials from state compensatory education funds, and so that, those funds have to be set aside first before we can budget for the rest, so that is what we have set aside. The M&amp;O tax rate of 97 cents and an INS tax rate of 40 cents. And we're not approving the tax rate tonight. We will wait until we get our certified values at the end of July and bring that at the August board meeting, but this is what the budget is based upon. We, the budget is based upon using a one-time, 5-point million, 5.9 million dollar of fund balance to balance the general fund budget. So, this is the compensation calculation, and this comes straight from TEA, and after our last budget workshop, I believe on the 12th, Saturday evening, they put a new template out on the 14th and added, adjusted some of the sales in there, and so when we reran it, we did get some additional compensation. We were looking at the basis of about 12.9 million. The actual difference is gonna be 14.2. So, what we've done here is, this is the calculation for what we're earning in 2018, 19, and you can see, we're dividing that by 21153, which is our ADA, and that gives us the $8,173 per ADA. When we put the same, or what we're projecting for 1920, 21,300 ADA, it brings us to $8,844 per ADA. And so, what we do is, we take that, the difference between those two numbers is the 671, and then we multiply that by our projected ADA, the 213, and that gives us the 14.9. Of that 14.9, or 14.2, excuse me, we have to spend 30% to give a raise, and really legally, to teachers with five years or more, or six years or more. You can choose to break it up to 75 and 25, but it's not required. We have decided to break it up and try and utilize those dollars to give all staff a raise. But we have to spend at least 75% of that 30%, which is the $3.2 million, on teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses. The remaining 25%, the $1 million, can be spent on other non-administrative staff. So, when we looked at our compensation, we tried to, you know, like I said, wish we could give the largest raise we, everybody wanted, but this is what we could afford when we start looking at a deficit budget. So, our starting pay would be 52,000, and you can see the comparison to San Antonio, Northeast. Shirts Siblo did not have their 1920 scale out, so that's their 1819. They're giving about a 3% raise. I would think it's gonna be about 51 something is what their starting pay is gonna be. Teachers from one to five years, counselors, librarians, and nurses are gonna get a $1,630 raise. Now, that's based upon a 187-day contract. If you have a contract that's longer than that, then that number would go up. It's based on 187 days. We put the percentages, not that these are what we approved, we approved the dollar amounts, but we put the percentages just to try to do a comparison of the districts that are really our main competitors for our staff. And you can see that San Antonio was at three, Northeast was at three, and Shirts Siblo was at two and a half. The teachers six and over, counselors, librarians, and nurses are getting a $1,930 raise, and that's about 3.7% for a six-year teacher. It's about 3.5 at the midpoint, and so, you know, the more you make, the smaller that percentage is, but that's how it comes out. And you can see how that compares to three and a half at San Antonio, three at Northeast, and Shirts Siblo at two and a half. Now, some of these, like Northeast, you can see, I put a plus. Some of these, and I didn't try and put all that in here, but when you look at their teacher scale, when their teachers are 15 years, they get an additional bump. 20 years, they get an additional bump, and so, some of the scales have some additional compensation in there. Other professionals, 2.75% at the midpoint, so they would take the midpoint of their pay grade, 2.75%, we get a dollar amount, and everybody in that pay grade gets the same dollar amount. SA ISD was at three, Northeast was at three, and Shirts Siblo was at two and a half. Paraprofessionals, 2.75%, the other schools were the same. Auxiliary was a little different, because we went 2.75 for our general fund auxiliary, but our child nutrition was able to afford a three, so we're recommending a 3% for our child nutrition workers. SA ISD, if they were a monthly employee, they got a 3%, but if they're hourly, they raised their minimum rate from 1325 to $15, and so that's that $1.75. I don't know if that carried up the entire scale, but I'm assuming that it probably did to a certain point. Northeast ISD was at 3%, and Shirts was at two and a half. Our bus drivers, $1 an hour raise. Again, that's roughly about a 5.6% raise for them. San Antonio, again, increased their minimum to the $15 an hour, and so, Northeast was at three, and Shirts Siblo was at two and a half. Administration is 1.5% at Judson, 3% at San Antonio, 3% at Northeast, and 2% at Shirts Siblo. And so, those are our proposals for the compensation for the 1920 school year. So, how does that break out when we look at cost? So, remember, we had to spend 3.2 on the teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses, and we spent a little over 3.4, I just rounded down for even numbers. Auxiliary and others, we didn't spend quite the $1,071,000 that we had to, it was $1,054, but we spent more on the teachers. We were required to spend the 4.2, we spent 4.4, and then on top of that, the administrative raise of 1.5% was about 154,000. So, overall, 4.6 million in additional compensation for the 1920 school year. So, when we look at our general operating fund, thank you. Our total local revenue, we're estimating 101.2 million dollars total state, 82.3, federal of 3.6. TRS on behalf, which is a, it's a wash, you'll see that number in both the revenue and the expenditures, the same amount. It's money from the state. They pay for TRS on employees that are on the state minimum pay scale up to the state minimum pay scale. And anything above that, we have to pay for. And so, that's just a revenue stream that comes in. So, total revenue, 196.7 million dollars. That's kinda how it breaks out. You can see, 51% is local. In state, you see, it's 42%, but it's really, if you added the TRS, the 5%, it's at 47%. If you remember, last year, that number was around 38%. So, the state did put some additional dollars into education, so that was really good to see. When we look at our expenditures, we have about 163.9 million in personnel cost. The operations is about 31.3, there's that TRS on behalf, 204.8 million dollars. That's our expenditures. Again, you can see, the majority of that is personnel when we look at it, 80%. Now, that's of expenditures. Remember, we looked at it against revenue, because we're not taking a balanced budget, and so it's about 87% when we look at revenue, which is better than the 91 we were at last year. So, when we look at what fund balance would kinda look like, if we take money out of fund balance, we're projecting about a $55 million fund balance. We have the revenue, we subtract our expenditures, we have the use of the unassigned fund balance of 5.9 million, implementation of the cost savings of 2.1 million, and so we are estimating the fund balance at the end of the 1920 school year would be about $49 million. Child nutrition, this is another fund that we would need to approve tonight. They have total local revenue of 1.9, total state of 70,000, and the federal of 12.7. Total of all their revenue is 14.7. Again, most of theirs is federal revenue, not local. Most of theirs is a federal reimbursement. Their expenditures, a little bit different model than the general fund. It's 6 million in personnel and then 8.5 million in operations, 14.6 million overall. So, you can see, they're pretty much a 60/40 operation. So, when we look at their fund balance projection, we're projecting a $2.3 million fund balance at the end of the year, 14.7 in revenues, 14.6 in expenditures, and so their fund balance is projected to go up a little bit by about $50,000. Our interest in sinking fund, 38.7 million in local, and you'll notice the state is zero. Last year, we did get some state revenue, and it was the, one of the allotments that went away. It was the additional state aid for homestead exemptions, and that went away, so we will not get that state aid this year. So, our interest in sinking fund will be wholly locally funded through taxes. So, that's kinda what that pie chart looks like. Our expenditures, and this is the dollars that pay for our bonds, 38.4 million, some operational expenditures of 50,000, so about 38.4 million in expenditures. And so, when we look at their fund balance, it's 25.3 million, the revenue of 38.7, expenditures of 38.4, we're projecting a fund balance of 20.5.5. Just note, one of the reasons why we have a fund balance is because of cash flow. We will make a $12.6 million payment August 1st, and we won't get any tax revenue in until November, December, January, February. Those are our tax revenue months. So, all funds, when we look at it all put together, 141.8 million dollars, the total state is 82.4, federal 16.3, that TRS behalf 9.5, 250 million dollars in revenue. And it looks a little bit different when we look at it on this scale. The projected expenditures, personnel, 170 million dollars, operations, 39.9, debt service 38.4, and the TRS, so 258 million in expenditures. That's kinda what that looks like. So, about 66% of it is personnel when we look at all funds combined. And again, this is just kind of a recap, assuming we get the 2.1 million savings, our general operating fund balance will decrease to 5.9, child nutrition will increase to 49,000, and interest in sinking would increase to 234,000. So, when we look at the total picture, we have an undersigned general operating of 46.8 million, 22% of expenditures, it's a little less than three months. Restricted child nutrition fund balance would be about 2.3 million, which is about 15% of expenditures, and they're limited to three months of expenditures. They can not have more than three months of operating expenditures on hand. And then our interest in sinking, when we look at the 25.5, is about 66% of expenditures, but when we take out that payment in August, it brings us down to about 33% of expenditures. The proposed tax rate, again, for next year, the 97 cents. Last year, we were at $1.4, so we're reducing the tax rate by 7 cents. Debt service, maintaining it at 40 cents. So, a total tax rate of $1.37 versus the $1.44 for the 2018 tax year. So, how does that affect a homeowner? Current year, the assessed value of a house is about 166,000 in the district. Once you get the $25,000 homestead exemption, have a taxable value of 137,000. At the $1.44 tax rate, that makes it about $1,980. Next year, remember, our values went up 10%. The assessed value is 180,000. Again, you get the homestead exemption, so that brings our taxable value to about 150,000, 2,068, so an increase of about $88 for our taxpayers. So, when we look forward to 2021, we have some things we still have to continue to work on. One of the things we want to keep at the forefront is the discussion we had about the Wagner feeder pattern retention incentive. This is a retention incentive to work with our schools that are in high economic distressed areas and high need. We have a high turnover of staff there, so this would be to try and maintain staff at those schools. Possibly looking at the realignment and possible closure of campuses. Our property and liability insurance are going up this year. Property insurance will be a minimum of 30% increase. We have Harvey that has hit the state. We've had major hailstorms, of which we've experienced some. Multiple of those have gone through the state. So, property is going up for all districts throughout the state, and our liability insurance is going up as well. We have our aging plant equipment that we will continue to monitor and look at, our aging bus fleet, and our aging technology, and I can tell you, those last three never go away, because, you know, they just keep going. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
The floor is now open for public comment. Ms. McKinney, you may take the podium.
Second slide. There, yes, ma'am.
Where it says, required district needs 30% of the increase in state and local revenue from 1819 to 1920 to get raises. How much money came from local revenue? Because of the meetings I've been in, it's all sounded like this 30% has just come from the money from the state.
And it may have, it's just, it's been a very long history, just because depending what your taxes bring in, and I'm gonna see if I can try and find it, it's not broken out here, but because it's a combination and depending on what your values do, the percentage that the state pays and the local pays each year changes, and so I think they put it in there both, because they didn't wanna limit it to one or the other, and I apologize, this is probably not making sense, but... Because the formula is based upon state and local, that's how they fund it. The state funding is split between... The state funding is split between local and state. And so I, I think that's why they put the thirty percent of state and local because it's gonna change each year depending on what your values in your district does and your tax rate. And I think it would have shortchanged some teachers in some districts if they didn't include the local part. I can get you what that value would be, but I don't have it broken out right here, no ma'am, I don't. Sure?
What's for midpoint, the three point seven percentage of what? Because if you multiply, if you do the math, I, I can kind of sort of do math.
Right.
The, the midpoint is fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Right. The, the three point seven was of a six-year teacher. Okay, right. And then if you go to the far end of the scale, it becomes about a three point one percent raise. And it just depends on where you're at the scale.
Okay, my understanding of the midpoint is you take all the salaries of all the teachers and you're basically average, you find the average salary or rate.
Midpoint is...
In the past, that's what we did told the midpoint is.
Okay, midpoint for me is midpoint on the scale.
Okay, so if I take that piece of paper that you put out in the compensation plan, which you really can't go by anyway because nobody gets paid because they got it, so take it higher than it. You can average that, or like first you figure out a take...
No, you would, you would go...
You just love to make that much that it is...
You would go to about year fifteen. And then that's where you would calculate, you would take nineteen hundred thirty dollars divided by what a fifteen-year teacher would make, and that's the midpoint of the scale.
And so three point seven percent, what's the dollar figure?
It's the, whatever the six-year teacher was making. And I don't remember what that number is off the top of my head.
No, 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 but the original number that you're getting, the three point seven percent, that's always the big...
Well, no, this is what I'm...
If we're talking about midpoint, you never tell us what the midpoint is.
That three point seven is not the midpoint. That's what I'm trying to tell you. The three point seven was based upon a six-year teacher scale. The midpoint would be between three point five and three point six. Okay?
So is there a thirty-year teacher, where you, where you all at this point?
If you're a thirty-year, you're at the far end of the scale.
Right, what percentage of that is...
And it's, it's gonna be lower than the three point five to three point six. It's gonna be closer to the three point one. But the dollar amount is the same, and that's why we're approving the dollar amount. Right, and that's...
A thirty-year teacher would get, uh...
The nineteen hundred and thirty dollars, yes ma'am. Everybody's gonna, if you're on a hundred and eighty-seven day contract, you will get a one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. It depends, I, I, I think they're on two oh seven. They, if you take nineteen thirty, divide it by a hundred and eighty-seven and multiply it by two oh seven, that would be your raise. It's gonna be two thousand one hundred and something dollars, I believe.
I, I'd like to make some clarification. I think that a lot of individuals are focused on the percent component. I want to make it clear, the raise that we are proposing to the board is a flat rate, a flat rate. Where the midpoint, excuse me, where the percentage came from, because we were being asked approximately what is the percent. So when you take the scale, our teacher scale, and we looked at it, we did an approximate average, anywhere from three percent to three point seven. But there's, it is a flat rate. So there really is no need to discuss a percent because ours is not a percent. It is a flat rate.
Yes ma'am. Go right ahead.
Um, I think for people like me, being a five-year teacher, part of my problem is seeing the breakdown y'all had up there comparing percentages to other districts this year. We haven't had a pay raise in four years. So, yes, you're comparing shirts of lows giving a certain percentage and northeast is giving a certain percentage. That's fine that they're giving that this year, but what about the raise they gave last year and the year before? So, yes, we're getting a three-point, whatever the case may be, this year. But me as a five-year teacher, I'm barely gonna be making a little over a thousand dollars more than a brand-new teacher fresh out of college this year. As a five-year teacher, to me that feels like a slap in the face. I've given my time. And part of my, part of my problem with that is, our motto is choose Judson. We want parents to come in, we want them to bring their kids in, but what are we doing to have educators choose Judson? And not choose these other school districts? The grass may not be greener on the other side, but the money is. So what are we doing to keep us here?
On that same note, I mean, I, this is my fourteenth year teaching with Judson. I haven't left to drive an hour to school every day to get to work. And I barely make more than a new teacher. I know in the past we used to have these steps. And so a person who back then worked that long, they got these thousand-dollar increases. Or I'll never get to the point that some of these other teachers who have been teaching for thirty years will be at when I'm at thirty years because they used to get this step, which we don't get anymore. So, you know, I was on board when she got hired. I make the same amount of money as she does, and I've got double the, double the years that she does. So that's, it's kind of sad for me that I stay and I'm getting basically no increase. Like, I almost make what a new teacher does for fourteen years.
Ms. Conoyer.
I just would like to say that we did give a raise two years ago. It's, it's been very unfortunate that there was misinformation put out at the very beginning of this. And I'm sorry about that. It did not come from the district, it came from somewhere else. And this has been very upsetting for a lot of you, and I'm very sorry about that. We are trying to do the very best that we can to be responsible to our teachers and to our taxpayers.
There was a press, there was a press release that went out the other day to a lot of the educators that mentioned the three point seven percent and didn't mention the flat number, and I think that's causing some of the confusion here. And it almost seems like if you look at the three point seven percent number, it almost appears if it's on that slide number eight, it seems almost deceptive because it's for the high, for the person with the least amount of years. And so of course the percentage is gonna be higher if you give them more money. It's gonna appear to be a higher percentage. And I just wanted to see, why didn't you put a sliding scale on there? Why didn't you like consider, well, jeez, this is an average, or it just kind of appears off? That's my comment, thank you.
So one of my questions would be, why doesn't the district actually define clearly what the midpoint is? Uh, this always causes a confusion. What prevents the district from saying, have you calculate what the midpoint is? Right, some districts have clearly defined it.
Year fifteen on the scale. And that's what it is.
And it is defined. It, and, and remember, for teachers, it is defined.
Right.
You can, you can look at the scale and see the year and, and see the number.
And then all the other pay grades, it's defined in the compensation plan. Yes ma'am.
So now, this, this piece of paper is actually the salary schedule. I can talk, I don't know. This piece of paper is actually the salary schedule, so if I go home and look it up, my base pay should be what's on that piece of paper.
Remember, it's off the eighteen nineteen scale.
Right.
Not the new scale.
Right, but if I go home and look it up, my base pay should be what's on that piece of paper. Cause it's not.
Your base pay is gonna be one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars more than it was last year.
No, no. If I look at the compensation plan for eighteen nineteen. The numbers on that represent what my base pay should be, or is, not should, is.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
It's, it's correct, up to forty-one years, because we stopped it at forty-one. But for teachers that are forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four, then they would continue to have gotten the incremental increase.
Okay. But we aren't making what's on that paper. That's big, that's part of the problem. Because for years and years and years, that piece of paper had a disclaimer at the bottom that said, this is what we hire new people in at. And the rest of us, you know, that doesn't represent what we're making. And that creates a lot of confusion also.
I am confused.
Yeah. Welcome to the crowd.
Okay, so, I, I believe the scale that was put out, and I, and like I said, I've been here six months. But we have the, the starting teacher salary. That's what we hire teachers at, right? Hundred and eighty-seven days, that's what they make. Then the rest of it should match where you are with the years' experience that you have. If it does not, we're gonna have to look at that.
Then I would urge you to come in, make an appointment with HR to come and address it.
Mr. Macias?
Teachers, yes.
I just had a, a real quick comment. Um, I, I just want to say I do appreciate administration opening this conversation for our, our participants. And in my tenure here, I can't recall this type of engagement, which is really always, uh, promising in terms of our communication with community. But I, I will say that, um, we had a salary study that TASB had conducted some years ago. It may be time for us to do that again and look at the idea of equalizing salaries if there is enormous discrepancies. Because I certainly don't like the idea of a one-year teacher making as much as a five- or six-year teacher. That's just not gonna work. So, what we can do, what, what we can do is initiate that salary study and then look at potentially options to try to equalize that salary going forward. But we're not gonna be able to do that tonight, but certainly going forward, we'll have an opportunity to address that.
Mrs. Eaton.
Mr. Macias, where would the money come from? I'm just curious.
Um, well, naturally, that's always the next case. So if we do initiate a study, TASB obviously would charge us. I don't know exactly what that fee is. Well, and, and, and I will say, uh, Ms. Eaton was asking what we would do, say that TASB came back and said, let's equalize things. I agree, we have to make some tough choices. But when we look at the, the idea of keeping teachers in the classroom and, and experienced teachers helping our students succeed, it may be worth the investment once we know what that number is. I can't say it's good or bad or anything until I have the information in front of me.
And, and I understand that. What I'm asking is, where would the money come from if we don't have it?
We would have to invest from our fund balance. We would have to. Now, the thing is, we also have to continue to work on being efficient. Um, we can't sustain increases that would go above for, for so many years. Cause you're right, your concern is, we, we couldn't sustain the increase in salary. But you have to look at factors like when we're training new teachers, it costs money to train new teachers.
Yeah.
So when we have experienced teachers, those, those trainings, I suspect, would be different. I don't know that for a fact, but that's sort of what this board would look into and ask Dr. Ball to kind of get some assessment on that. It, yeah, and, and so, um, I would have to say the first source would be fund balance. But I guess my humble opinion, it would have to be a reasonable amount. It couldn't be...
And, and the reason why I ask that, don't get me wrong, cause I'm all for paying people for what they do and their work, and you know that. But we talked about this, and we talked about the possibility of going into the fund balance, which is sitting at like about twenty-five million right now, but we're getting ready to make a twelve million dollar payment out.
It's a fifty-five million.
Is that fifty-five? But we're getting ready to make our twelve million dollar payment for our, uh, on our, um, not loans, but, um...
No, sir, that, that's the INS fund balance where we'll make a twelve million dollar payment.
And it's gonna drop down, cause that's the one that's at twenty-five million, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so the fund balance is the fifty-five million, the one that we by law have to have at a certain amount, right?
And we're, we're proposing taking out about five point nine million this coming year.
This, for this year, to, to do what we're getting ready to do.
Yes ma'am, yes.
Okay. And, and the reason I'm asking is because of sustainability. I don't want to say, you know, you know, hey, let's go, let's do this, take that money and start using it. And then, what, next year, we can't? Or, well, maybe to ask us a year and a half? And then we can't anymore because we're not gonna have any money to replace it?
Well, all I'm asking...
That's why I'm asking.
All I'm asking for is a study. We do need to discuss this in greater depths and, but we won't, we don't know anything until we have the information. So once we have the information, we can determine if it makes, makes strategic sense to do certain things. So all I'm saying is if we have this inequities, we need to figure out what we need to do to fix those inequities. And then secondly, is it rational? Can we do it without, you know, hurting the district and our, the children we serve? But we certainly can't do it until we have the information. So initiating the study is, is step one.
Right, and, and that's the only reason why I was asking, because we have talked about this. We talked about this in the budget meeting, so that's why I asked.
Let's go back to public comments to see if there's anyone else that would like to speak. Mr. Flynn? Oh, okay. Ms. McKinney? And then Mr. Flynn.
What's the dollar value for the incentive proposal for the Wagner feeder schools?
We, uh, are estimating that, that would be about seven hundred thousand dollars. But that's not for this year. That would not start until next year's budget. We just wanted to put it in there so that staff at that school would, would know about it. Yes ma'am.
Mr. Flynn.
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Yes, sir, this is a public...
Okay. We're live, okay. In previous budget meeting, figure seventeen hundred thrown around. Can somebody explain why seventeen jumped to nineteen thirty and what the set, where the set came? Um, another question. On the fifteen-year salary for eighteen nineteen is fifty-four nine fifty.
No.
Is that correct? Fifty-four, fifty-four three fifty?
Correct.
Okay, fifty-four three fifty. Is, is, with, like, the three point seven applied to that? If it is, that's two thousand ten dollars. How does that figure?
Let me, let me restate that. Ours is a flat rate. It's a flat rate. The percentage was done in order to try to explain to some that kept asking, what is the most comparable percentage like other districts were putting out? So I would say the best thing is forget about the percentage and go with the flat rate.
Question, this question is, what percentage of Judson's teachers are six-year or more? Maybe seven-year or more, because your three point seven figure applies to a certain amount of people, and that's what went out. It's up on the board comparing to northeast and, and north side and everybody else. You're putting that three point seven figure out there like it's a brand on your chest. But it might not apply to twenty-five or thirty percent of your teachers. If you have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-year teachers, that's three point seven is not them because they're making fifty-five or fifty-six, and nineteen thirty is, it might be two percent, might be two point seven. So the three point seven percent that came in the press release is very inaccurate.
Correct.
Then why did it go out?
Because it was trying to say that this is an approximate amount.
But the nineteen thirty is not an approximate amount.
Right.
That should have been in there.
Right, the entire...
Because you have a lot of people that's, that sat down and started figuring out their salaries saying, I'm not getting three point seven percent. Probably a lot of these teachers behind me are not getting three point seven. And they saw that, and I, it lit up my phones, my, I had forty-seven messages, and thirty of them were from teachers or from people in the Judson. I, I don't get forty-seven messages.
The entire time that we did our budget workshops, it was always a flat rate. It was always the flat rate that was discussed since the beginning. The only thing that had changed was the amount of the flat rate that changed. That Mr. Atkins spoke to at the very beginning, I think it was maybe slide...
From this slide. What, what happened is, like I said, on the fourteenth, after our last budget workshop, they put out an additional template Saturday evening. When we reran the numbers, they put in additional cells. This number, when we were at the seventeen and fourteen raises, was twelve point nine, I believe. Uh, and now it went to fourteen two, and so that initiated that we had to give additional money, uh, to meet that requirement. And that's where it went from seventeen to nineteen thirty and from fourteen to sixteen... And that's where it went from seventeen to nineteen thirty, and from fourteen to sixteen thirty.
And then, what was, what was the seventeen hundred from last budget meeting? I was watching videos.
The seventeen hundred was for the teachers that had six or more years. The ones that are getting nineteen thirty now, at our last budget meeting, were proposed seventeen. The, the ones that are getting sixteen thirty now, at our last budget meeting, were proposed fourteen.
The seventeen hundred, was that a figure coming from the state, or was that just a figure you were trying to arbitrarily make in?
It's based on this calculation, trying to make sure that we meet this thirty percent requirement, is what it came from.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a lady.
So with this increase, what is going to happen with our healthcare plans, and how is the district going to be contributing to that? Because part of the reason that it feels like I have less money right now is because I'm paying more for healthcare every year.
The, the health insurance rates, we were hoping to bring those. They're going to be anywhere from a six point six percent increase to a nine.
Wait, wait, let him finish.
Nine percent? We are adding a plan that will actually cost less, it has a little bit less benefits, but it would actually cost less than any of the plans we have this year.
So the district's contribution would stay the same?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we're, we're not proposing increasing the contribution. We put it all into the raise. We, we could have split some of the money out, put it towards the health contribution, lowered the raise, and we decided to put it all into the raise.
Okay, so regardless of the years and the flat rate that you guys are proposing, we're based on a twelve-year teacher, not the fifteen. So that alone gives us three years of that, that we're not really looking at. And then on top of that, you've got teachers that are more specialized. So what happens to those stipends? Are we getting anything from the stipends? Are we gonna get an increase in those stipends? Are we gonna increase on our retention bonuses? Or is that just gonna be for Wagner feeders?
Right now, there's no proposed retention bonus in the compensation plan.
So in other words, we're, we're not gonna get those, and then we're just gonna get whatever the, you know, the amount is, which is nineteen hundred dollars, you know, and then the following year, so, and then the following year, when they come back in and say, "Okay, now our insurance has increased," we're really out three percent of our salary. So we'll be in a negative again. So we're really, our raises have always been based, I think, on the fact that, sure, here's your raise, and then we go to the meeting at the beginning of the year, and, oh, guess what? Your increase in your insurance is this much. So we really, in actuality, if you look at the raises that our teachers have gotten in our stipends that we get as specialized teachers, they really aren't any, because then we're still out the money for that insurance. So something has to happen, whether it's the insurance or an actual raise, raise that we see the money.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Well, I would like to say something. I want to thank you very much for showing up to this public hearing. It is your responsibility as taxpayers to come and see what the board is doing, being stewards of your money, of your taxpayer. We too are taxpayers, and this also affects us. But ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say that we meet every month on the third Thursday. We will be changing those, because there's something that is pressing, and we'll need to change our dates. So please look on the website and find out when the new meetings are, the, the new dates for the meetings. But ladies and gentlemen, you're invited to every meeting, to express your concerns at every meeting. And if you don't come to the meetings, and you're watching them via YouTube, and you have concerns, we would like to see you at the next regularly scheduled meetings, to voice your concern, even if you viewed it on the computer. I love seeing you all here, and I know that you are committed to your job, to the district. We want to do what is right for you. That is exactly what we're trying to do. Most of us up here have been in your situation, and so we understand, we understand. But now, what we're trying to do is the best thing for you, so that we can give you what you deserve. And you're not ever going to get what you deserve. Hopefully, you realize that the job that you do is painstakingly a lot, but you're doing it because you love it, not just for the money. I know that, I can say that, because that's exactly what I did for thirty-six years, what you're doing. And I didn't get the increases either. We have to make do where we make do. I'm not saying that to make you feel badly, but I just want to, in reality, we really are doing the best that we can to be good stewards of the money that we have. And I just would like for you to show up more and express your concern, and let this be a two-way communication. It's not us and them, we're in this together. We all choose Judson ISD. Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned at six twenty...